They're they're asking, yeah.
Shall begin the adequate notice of this regular meeting is required by the open public meetings act was provided by the posting mailing, delivery and filing of this notice in January five, two thousand and twenty-two. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office sent to the carrier news, the echo sentinel and tap into Warren and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings act. Please rise for the pledge. I will now call the roll. Mr. Bishi here. Mr. Rosen. Mr. Desai.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Ms. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Valentino. Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Brazil.
Here.
We have a quorum. Fantastic. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. This is our our annual retreat of the board, probably different than most retreats you've been to. Unless you've been to a board meeting retreat before. Certainly want to thank the administration for compiling survey results for ourselves, essentially to keep ourselves honest on what we think we're doing well, what we could improve on. And there's always, in my opinion, everything's continuous improvement. So there's always items any board can can improve on, so including us. So Dr. Mingle had shared out earlier, or excuse me, later last week, some of the results, quite a number of pages. Hopefully, everyone had a time to look over it. This is, you know, is a board. This is our opportunity to review, digest, discuss, take action, plan out, map out, whatever we see fit as a board to help the really the overall operations of the board in the spirit of the mission and vision of the district. So I want to read the whole thing one by one. That would be torturous to all those involved. Are there any? So based on the based on the self eval, are there any items that stuck out? Any board member would like to discuss further? Any questions, any confusion? I will say the the summary page was interesting to see. We did relatively well as compared to to previous years, still certainly the areas highlighted in yellow. So our lowest is three point three, which I think is pretty good. As a comparison, last year, the highest score was a three point four. So I think it certainly reflects, you know, nine diverse opinions, which is fantastic. Seven diverse opinions, I believe there were two that did not take the survey. So seven diverse opinions of of ourselves. In three point six, just scanning is one. There was one year where there was a three point seven. So is one of the highest that the board has ever received. So certainly well done for the board on what we do well, but let's try to, you know, collectively, let's come together and work to see how we can better see how we can how we can, what we can do to raise the the areas that are outlined here is three point threes. So policy and government student achievement and performance monitoring, board operations and meetings, board operations, board member communications. It's gonna be a quick retreat. Dinner's not here yet. Maybe it is. Policy and government. Let's start there. Policy and governance, excuse me. So moving on to page three, policy and governance. It's the can't be free text feedback. You can see along the bottom in the comments. There any so number five appears to be our lowest in this area. The board follows its own policies regarding board operations that scored to two point four in two thousand and two, which is down point two from last year of two point six. Anyone have any?
Mr. Bishi. I just didn't know. It's just an attachment to one of Dr. Mingle's updates.
I believe it would, yeah, I believe it came in the superintendent's update on Thursday.
And it's under the retreated.
Okay, thank you. It's helpful. I can email it to you directly. That's perfect. Yeah, I got a couple of updates. I didn't know which one. I read it, but I didn't print it.
Joe, comment, Mrs. Sun?
Just that I note that that is the lowest for two years in a row. And so, you know, I certainly would be interested in maybe fleshing out in a little greater detail. What is the cause of of that type of a rating and how we can improve that? That seems something within our control.
Yep, agreed. Yeah. Thank you for pointing it out. My and and I'm gonna try to deduce this based on the comments that I read. It, based on the specifics in the comments, it kind of feels like the norms are a topic of, and if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. I'm not trying to put words in anyone's mouth. But I am interested in improving this for for future years. So if I believe its own policies regarding board operations and combined with the comments that are below that the effect specifically mentioned a few times the board norms. So is is there any? Let's discuss the norms. So are there any norms, any changes to the norms, any, do we need the norms?
I think we definitely need them.
Okay.
I don't know about. I don't have any specific changes. I think it's more adherence to the norms if they're all agreed upon. I didn't have specific things that I think need to be included. Not to say that the norms can't change. They can. It's it's open to this board. I just think it's more about if we're going to have the norms, let's follow them and be adherent to them.
I think that's a good point. They are, the norms essentially belong to the board. So if we can change them, they're not set in stone. They're dynamic. They adjust as boards adjust and boards will adjust. Boards will continue to adjust. I think their intent is to help the board, not hinder or hurt the board. So. Ms. Keller.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. We definitely need them. I think there we have many opportunities to weigh into them and to react to them at the start of the year to make sure that we don't have questions about them. It's not that difficult. It's review stuff, participate, be engaged, don't surprise each other, be respectful. It's like kind of what we tell kindergarteners. It's not that complicated, right? In fact, and I'm to be reminded of this, I feel bad, but literally one of our board goals, number one, is reestablish best practices for norms of board communications and operations for this year. So while I agree, I think overall it's very functioning and but if that's one of our, if that's our number number one, to Ms. Zahn's point, for two years in a row, it has been one of the lower rated items. I think that there we need. I don't know if it's revisiting the norms. I think that they're pretty clear, but I think I agree with you, Mr. One sign. I think it's it's a it's a adherence to them and accountability for them, right?
Let me say something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can wait.
Oh, thanks. I was, I agree, we need norms. I try to just follow them. We should all ensure that each other and that we hold each other accountable for following them. And I also think, I'm not sure how much it's like during COVID, post-COVID, that we weren't meeting physically like this. And we were all on the same screen with public and Dr. Mingle. And so I think it's just like how the kids and teachers going back full time and post-COVID that maybe we just need to check ourselves. I'm hoping that'll fix it a bit. That's all.
I didn't write, I don't think I was the author in these particular comments, so I'm not speaking from that perspective. I mean, we went through our norms, the beginning part of this calendar year shortly after new board members joined us. And both last year and this year, it's felt to me like it was less an issue of norms and perhaps more an understanding of Robert's rules. How does a person make a motion? Our norms don't cover that. Our norms cover things like, you know, the order in which we speak and how we're supposed to communicate through committee chairs. And, you know, we certainly could all do better at that. But how, if you come onto the board, as we all have been new people at some point, with things that you're passionate and concerned about, and you want to find a way to initiate conversations about things that came up when you were campaigning or that are things you're hearing in your community, how do you go about doing that? And always has felt to me like it's on the bringing of motions part where we get, we stumble a bit with surprising people and perhaps not having the best conversations because we don't give people an opportunity to show up informed and ready to talk. And so I'm just wondering if there's more than norms at play here in how we conduct the meetings in the most productive way.
That's a good point. I remember at one point, there was a almost like a PowerPoint, I'm gonna call it a cheat sheet. I know that's not a good word to use in a middle school, but it was like a cheat sheet of Robert's rules of here's how you introduce a new motion. Here's how you make this up on the fly. So perhaps, and I could try to find it myself, that might be something worthwhile re-repassing around to the board, assuming it's still valid. There's probably, you know, thousands of them out there, I mean, but that's that's a good point because that is, that can be both intimidating and confusing at the same time. There's a whole book here on Robert's rules that just makes it some seemingly more confusing at times when you try to read it. So yeah, that I think that's a good, that's a good, that's a really good point. And I'm also wondering, and I agree that the norms were, I guess, past the beginning of the year, if I'm not mistaken, they were also recently repassed again in the July meeting, but it's worth a discussion at an export. I mean, we're here now, we can discuss it now. If there's no discussion, no, want to bring it back up, but how can we, if it is our lowest, two point four, how can we? Is 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 that enough? I don't I don't know the answer to that. So Mr. Bishi, yes.
Stream of consciousness, I guess. I try to figure out when you say, don't surprise the board, like what the actual process is. And definitionally, Ms. On, you're talking about, I don't know, are we supposed to first go to the committee and then go to the full board? And if we're not supposed to surprise the board, does that mean just, hey, tonight I want to talk about a topic? Or is it the ten bullet points of the topic? Definitionally, I just don't know, or in action, I don't know how much you have to pre-discuss via emails or via committee before the board so that it doesn't seem to be like you're bringing up a new topic and everybody's caught off guard. Like, what's the difference between catching people off guard or just having a good discussion? And I don't mind learning. I learn everything on the job, pretty much not in the books. So, Mr. Maggio, when you say, hold people accountable, I'd love somebody to say, you know, throw a flag on the plane, say, Mr. Bishi, that's not what I think the norm is. But I just I have trouble understanding how much you have to pre-discuss versus discuss actively at the board.
Sure. And I would welcome feedback from anyone, including administration. My intent is just the spirit of if you're, if you plan on bringing up a topic at a board meeting, let's say tonight you want to introduce, we should build twenty-two new schools and more, like us learning about that now versus being able to plan and be like, okay, we've identified, we thank you, we at least know, we can put it on the agenda. So everyone has the benefit, including the public, to know that this is at least going to be brought up and potentially discussed by the board. By not doing that, this is my opinion, I think we're doing a disservice to the public by just if if we know ahead of time that this topic is going to come up and we've already worked it with others, I know, and then Sue is going to second it and JoJo's going to third it and whatever, like that seems a little
Right, got it, got it.
predisposed, right? So and so so then other board members may feel left out. Well, I didn't know this was coming up, so I couldn't be prepared. I wasn't included in the conversations. There's the whole quorum thing that we have to work with. Bye-bye, also known as the law. So I think that's the spirit. I've spoken enough, so. This is on.
In my mind, there's also a difference between the process for bringing something up as new business and and creating an opportunity for to discuss it and actually making a motion on it. I'm pretty much always willing to discuss anything that is of importance to any board member would like to know about it in advance because then I can think about it. I'm not caught in the moment, but there are few instances that I would want to actually vote on something I'm learning about for the first time at that meeting, unless there's some sort of an emergent situation. I take all of the comments that come up. I consider them. I do independent research if I feel that that's going to enhance my own understanding of it, but absent some compelling reason, it's it's I don't think that it is in the best interest of the job that we're trying to do here if the board is put in a situation where a topic never previously introduced actually has a motion attached to us requiring us to take action in the moment. I, those situations leave me feeling not always fully informed.
So when you say like few instances, like if it shows up in new business, we shouldn't be having a motion and voting on something that's introduced for the first time that day, unless extreme, very unique circumstances.
And we can all think of circumstances we've had to move that fast. The last couple of years have had situations like that where, you know, we meet Brett, you know, once a month or whatever, and we've needed to move back faster than that. But for many topics, that's not necessary. I would want to discuss it. And then if further action is going to be taken, have that set for for future agenda.
I think that's fair.
Oh, sorry, I guess like building upon that. I just feel that we we come to these meetings, we have, again, reviewed materials, seen the output of different committees and their work, right? And the the path, right, it's, we're making decisions, we're taking actions right here. And there was a, there's a trajectory that's happening to get to these potential agenda topics, right? So things like masking, things like the budget, things like the food program, right? There, there were many opportunities to review the trajectory of where that was going to go, right? But I don't remember in a lot of those times, a lot of the topics that came up in those related board meetings where we were having to vote, a lot of the things that came up in those meetings, I don't think I've had it, I'd ever brought up before. Is it possible that board members come to a meeting and are suddenly like, you know what? I feel differently about this? Sure. Is it likely? I don't know, but I just feel like there were opportunities to go, you know what? I'm I'm not okay with this plan. And to bring that up earlier than the board meeting, to give everybody a heads up, to give administration a heads up, to be able to react to that because there are so many opportunities to do that. So when you just wait until the meeting to bring up those topics, it's to me, it's disingenuous to being a board member. It's disingenuous to the rest of us. It's disingenuous to the public. And I think that is, so I agree, like new business and bringing up, but there could have been something on agenda that we were prepared to vote on. And then I feel like all these other topics are brought up, other motions that were never brought up previously. And I think that's also, I think that's also a problem. That's just what you said.
And and the method to do that is through commit, generally through like the committee minutes, I guess, no, like when you say previously, I guess.
Yeah, so there's, there's an opportunity to weigh in on every committee agenda, right? Because we all see each other's committee agendas. So if there's topics that are coming up, you can bring it up there. You can bring it up when you see the output of those meetings. And then that usually translates to the actual board meeting agendas, right? And then you have an opportunity to there to break it up. So there was, there's many opportunities where you see something and you go, I don't, I'm not comfortable with it, or I have these questions, or I have this sort of, you know, pushback or this, this, these types of things are gonna, you know, I don't want to talk about. I think those are the opportunities where it gets them pulled through Dr. Mingle and then he responds back. We all see those communications so that we all then kind of digest, oh, well, that's a different point of view that I wasn't expecting, right? So I think I, that's just something I've noticed too.
So we would do that when the agenda for the committee meetings comes out. That's opportunity one and opportunity two, when the minutes of the committee, then you'd reply to mechanically administrative, I'm trying to think, you reply to Mr. Dr. Mingles. Yeah, like here's the minutes of the meeting. And then if you see questions, you say, okay, and I have the following questions.
I think it's, if it's, if it's a, I'm sorry. I think it's, if it's a committee topic, then it would follow up. If it's something that, because I'm sure there's a topic that may not fall under any committee.
Right, right.
That that would be, you know, reach out to Dr. Mingle. I guess the norm state to copy the president just as a
Yeah, just the two, or maybe the committee chairperson.
Could be a committee chair, just not a forum is the
That's the trick.
Kind of the spirit of that. So, yeah, and that's not to exclude others. It's to kind of give a heads up because that way, if it, if you, if a board member would like to add that to a future agenda, at least it's known. Or if there's something for, many times, topics that come up are an ask of administration, administration. And then we're, we're putting them on the spot. Twenty-two schools, we can't do that. Come on. So.
And then you know how when we ask questions of Dr. Mingle and then Dr. Mingle, you bring back, you know, you give a superintendent's update, would questions on the individual committee minutes also be dispersed to the full board that way? Is that how it would work?
So mechanically, I think any questions that come to me wind up in the next update for the whole board to see.
Exactly.
The as far as reflecting tonight, I think this is the kind of conversation, it's really a matter of, does the board see this kind of a conversation and answering those questions as a priority? It could be a board goal, you know, fine tune, review, create whatever, that that process. Because I think everybody's bringing up good points. If there's something totally out of the blue, that's not on any agenda, you, you still need a mechanism for that. From the administrative side, al-almost never do we bring something to the board and ask you to vote on it at the same meeting, almost, especially when it's a big decision. We make a public presentation and then we wait until the next meeting at a minimum so that, and somebody said this earlier, I think it might have been Mr. Brazil, so that not only the board members, but also the public have a chance to hear about it and get their thoughts together. And then they can send emails or come to the meeting and express their point of view. When a motion is made on the spot at the meeting, not only do the board members not have a chance or the administration, but also members of the community, which I think was Mrs. Zahn's point. Because, and I'll, I'll use one example, that was a unanimous vote of the board. That way it doesn't alienate anybody. The board voted unanimously not to take the recommendation of the ad hoc of the return to school committee around when masks would come back on. That was a nine zero board unanimous decision. But because that decision was made that in that way, there was no chance for dialogue about what are the implications of making that decision in that way? So we didn't have a conversation here about, well, what happens to these other decisions that were reliant on that decision? And so we had to get the ad hoc committee back together, you know, a couple of days later to say, okay, what did we just actually do? And what does it really mean for day-to-day operations? I think we want to avoid those situations wherever we can. And if we had talked about it, even in an email, a couple of days before that meeting, I would have been able to say at the meeting, okay, if the board goes in this direction, we need to also decide A, B, C, D, or at least be aware of what those implications are, which is not massive change to process. I think when when Matt Giacobi comes or when we don't use school boards here for this purpose, but when they go to districts for it, they always say there's almost nothing that is so emergent at a board meeting that it has to be voted on that day. And if you're unsure, just table it and come back to it the next meeting so that we can be sure. We don't want to be in a habit where we have to go back and fix things because we, you know, and by emergent, I mean, there was a natural disaster and a roof came off of the school and we need to emergent approve finances. That's the kind of stuff. It's very rare for us to have those situations. So I think the the clarifications people are making between the norms and this point about how do we get new topics out there is a good one. And maybe that's the difference between the way we worded things last year and the way it is for this year. I looked ahead a little bit, so two point, two point four was the board follows its own policies regarding board operations is out of four point O. The only other item in this year's survey results that got a two point four was in board operations for meetings. Board members do not surprise the administration or fellow board members at meetings. These sound very they're all connected. They go hand in hand, right? So, so I would, I would propose adding we can words with it later on, some sort of goal to for the for the board to improve upon this for the coming years. Because I, I think it helps all of us, including the community, the staff, administration. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Tell, keep me honest. But yes, Mrs. On.
Could we think through and perhaps consider adding an element of training for new board members specifically on this topic? I, it's a little unfair. They step in, they, you know, I think that we haven't been as good at that as we maybe could be.
That thought came to my mind as well. Yeah, I, I wasn't putting one another. I wasn't involved, but none of us were last year. So I don't know what was or wasn't covered. But maybe there's, maybe there's a standard curriculum, for lack of a better term, on it, maybe that's there. Don't, don't let me misspeak. It just sounds like these are some items that we would want to hit for sure, given the the back-to-back scoring of this to Mrs. Zahn's point. So I think it's, and pretty much everybody has gone through some version of this. The, the, yes, there is that giant manual from school boards. But as any new board member can can attest, when you go to a meeting before you've had a single board meeting and you get a, I don't know how long, a hundred and ten-page book, it doesn't really help you with the day-to-day. How do you, so we, we have to do the things about ethics training and all that. Mr. Hagel and I have spoken about this a little bit, too. It's probably worthwhile to break that into more than one conversation. And maybe there's a meeting prior to the everybody's first meeting that's really about, here's what it's going to be like when you take the oath. You know, you can invite your family, those kinds of, how do I get ready for my very first meeting? And then maybe a few weeks after that, we have another opportunity. And perhaps if there's a time, which is what happened this year, where there's an outgoing, or the board president usually sits in on that. But if there's, if the board president is leaving the board, maybe we extend that to the vice president or something else so that we have that continuity. And that could be part of an action step around whatever the goal word become wording becomes.
Yeah.
I want to also bring up, so slightly above two point four is two point six, which is board operations. Number one in that section, board members share information appropriately through the committee chairs and the board president between meetings and do not surprise yourself in public, which is also just to me, it's all that is also related. I'll, I'll be honest, when I joined, I wasn't that familiar with the committees. I was very familiar with a board meeting, but all the things I was very familiar with a board meeting, but all the things that happened to get to the board meeting. It was, I just underestimated sort of just the sheer amount of that. To be fair, I was on like five committees, so that's, that's improved. But I think that that is maybe another sort of training opportunity is just when you are asked what committee you want to be on. To me, that's a, that is part of your privilege of being a board member is that you're choosing and that your, your active participation in that. And the decisions that are made in that that are going to be brought up to the board, I think is just a big part of the responsibility that I know I personally underestimated. That, you know, it's, there is a lot of, of things that are happening and a lot of productivity is happening in the committee meetings that then get brought to the board. So I don't know if there's a, that's a training opportunity, but I just kind of want to mention it because it is the, 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 the scoring of that is, is also on the lower side.
And we are jumping, but that's okay. Perhaps that could be also something included in the new.
Right.
Board member training, training orientation.
Yeah.
Grounding. For, for item two, policy and governance, is there any, this was a very good discussion and I don't want to cut it off. I don't want to drag it on either.
To drag it on.
No.
You know, we have like the budget buddies on the finance committee. I wonder if we could have a mentor, like a one-on-one for a new board member where. An experienced board member and doesn't take my, I mean, three years doesn't experience, but I guess three years is experience for me. Like to a new board member, just a one-on-one so you feel comfortable. I know a couple of people. Kind of played that role informally for me when I joined. That might be a cool way to do it as well. Not just a budget buddy for finance, but for the entire operations.
Yep.
You can put something in place, but if members aren't going to utilize and then follow it, as we saw. It doesn't matter.
Well, and you're right, because I didn't have a formally assigned mentor, but people jumped in to do that for me.
So.
So, I guess.
It's a very good idea. And just you said the whole budget money. You were mine, and that was one of the. Not the most ideal meeting situation.
Taking through the mentor thing more, so. I like the idea. Would, it would be. I'm not trying to use names, so it would be a person who just started their third year ideally.
Or just an experienced person. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right, that, that was my mental, okay.
That's been on the board, maybe leave it vague for a period of time, that is able to mentor an incoming board member. I, I do think it makes sense. I can't remember the training, but I was almost thinking. When you get the training, I can't remember if it was online plus print or whatever, it's definitely print. But almost going through a quote-unquote day in the life of a board member and having the board, you know, sit here and they do a depiction of what it's like. When, when the public's here and this is what happens with the agenda, this is what it takes to get up to the agenda, like Mrs. Keller said. Those things were unknown to me as well. I just saw the public board meetings. I had no idea what happened behind the scenes. And even coming onto the board, I didn't know what goes into the composition of the agenda and all the meetings prior. So I, I do think. It's, it's not just a training up until, because you're completely overwhelmed. When you get to your first board meeting and even beyond, I think it's a revisitation of that periodic training. And how to make a motion and all those kinds of things versus a one and done at the beginning of your tenure. Because it's going to go in one ear and out the other, because you're overwhelmed with everything that you're doing as, as a member of the board.
My experience seems like it took a full year to try to get them.
Right.
Because the whole budget cycle is different than when you start and when you went. So you're, you're coming in the middle of a budget cycle. You're like, well, how do we get here? Well, that's, that's all, that was six months ago. You missed that kid.
Right, or, or even like, or even like salary negotiations, right? Those are, those are periodic. They're not exact.
Right.
Moving forward. So I think, yeah, all of that is, is helpful. And maybe now that I'm thinking of it and what you're saying, as part of that, I don't know, onboarding tutorial or mentorship. Maybe it's a calendar of events that are needed throughout the year that the board is responsible for. So at least you have like an overarching picture of, okay, here's when, you know, salary negotiations are started. Here's the budget cycle. Here is X, Y, and Z. Just so you have a map of kind of what's going to come. I think that might be useful too.
Um, I'm not suggesting this is a solution, but just something I thought that was interesting. I'm sure many of you saw this too, that I think. Long Hill is one of the few districts that has a governance committee. Which sounds like a lot of fun, I realize. Um, but I, they actually had, they were in the news because there was something somewhat controversial about like signing a thing that said. Yes, I attest to doing this. I, I'm not stating whether or not I think that's a good idea, but I just thought that was interesting that I, that. That is a whole committee that they actually have.
So many moons ago, this board had a policy committee. And I, I was not on the board at the time, but my understanding was the policy committee was dissolved in favor of. So the policy committee would look at finance-related policies. And work that way. And it was gone the way, this might have been before you joined. I don't know.
We have.
Okay. Then you could probably speak good better than I can. But then it was decided that this individual committees would look at the policies tied to that. And if there was a need for an ad hoc committee, that would be formed. I'm not saying one is right or wrong, but. It was originally, originally, I don't know, seven years ago, that at least we, this board did have that.
Policy, yeah, I was on it, gut finders.
Doesn't mean we can't go back to it. I just, we were there. Mrs. On, thoughts?
Um, not on the governance committee or policy committee, but I, I did want to kind of make a general overall observation. We're really high functioning and we do a really good job and everyone here treats each other and our constituents with respect. To score ourselves so harshly and to then have a conversation so intent on doing better, I think speaks well of this body. And I just wanted to put that out there for a second.
Sometimes you're your own worst critic, right?
Always room to improve, but we're not broken.
Very good point. Thank you, Mrs. On. Yes, it's. Are you telling us to move on? That is, actually, that is a really good point. We've always been regarded. Beyond the walls of our community as a highly functioning board to Mrs. Zahn's point. So it's something I think we take very serious and we should certainly be proud of. So. Credit to us for wanting to do better and, you know, finding areas where we can improve and seeing what we can do to improve those areas for the benefit of us, the public, our staff. Their students ultimately, which is really why we're all here. So thank you for that. Is there anything else on the policy and governance section any board member wishes to? Discuss. The next lowest at a three point three out of four is item number five, student achievement and performance monitoring. And looking at that section, our lowest score was a three point O out of four. For the item, the board considers and communicates how decisions are linked to student achievement and the budgeting process. This is an interesting one. I find it interesting. Sometimes it's hard to make that link. For me anyways. Mrs. On.
I'm sorry. Um, I, I struggle a little bit with the term student achievement. To be honest, because I mean, I, I think we all know we are talking about I-ready scores and other types of scores that measure acquisition of. Of measurable knowledge in the core subjects, but that is, I assume that isn't all of what we mean by student achievement. Certainly not in a whole child environment that we function in. So when we scored ourselves at the three point O. You know, board considers and communicates how decisions are linked to student achievement. I'm. I'd, I'd love the people who were, the board members who ranked us that low in that area to explain a little bit more clearly. The ways in which they felt we don't communicate in a manner linked to student achievement. Because everything we do, we link it to which of the whole child criteria does it match up to? Uh, so I mean, we, we pick some pretty direct. Ties. So could anyone elaborate perhaps a little on? What they think this means? I'm the only one confused. Okay.
No, I don't, I don't think you are.
I'm, I'm confused too. I couldn't.
I, I don't think you're.
If I had to write a list to say how we consider and then communicate. The decisions we made that are linked to student achievement and then the budget. I, I couldn't make the list. Am I listing like, okay, we provide resource and we approve it? Is it staff that we approve it and then that is linked to student achievement? I couldn't reconcile the two.
But I, I think that speaks, and I'm not saying I'm, I, I have this solved because I don't, but I think that speaks to. Us being able to maybe more clearly answer the question of how are we allocating budget that results in student. I'll just say air quotes achievement, right? Because maybe that term is, is up for debate as well. To me, that's how I took that section. How can we quote-unquote justify the budget that's being allocated to improve? Or help our students achieve whatever the metric is by which we're measuring achievement? And maybe there's a divide there that I'm not understanding either, right? Can we, can we draw the direct line from we spent money on X? Which then translated to student achievement on Y metric? And I think that's hard to do.
Maybe I'm reading this wrong. Is that, so we went from a, okay, the low was in two thousand sixteen at two. And then it was two point left, right to left, right? So we went. Up. From two point seven to three. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's the highest.
So it's interesting. So, so we, we went up, yeah, that's a good point. We went up from last year. We are at a three out of four. And that's our lowest. I don't want to say not bad, because I said continuous improvement on everything is always a possibility, but. This is something we want to spend more time on or considering the other priorities.
Yeah, I also, maybe. I, I also think too, not everything in the, in the budget can be directly correlated to student achievement. Dr. Mingle's example, you know, God forbid a roof blew off of one of the schools. That's, that's a, a functional need, right? For any school to have a roof, can't die that, tie that directly to student achievement. Maybe you can tie. Curriculum or specific new jobs creator job, right, that's on the agenda tonight to student achievement. But I, I think it, it, you kind of have to divide the two, because not everything in the budget is going to draw directly to student achievement. And maybe that's an easier way to try and figure it out, at, at least the way I do so.
I think it's next to impossible.
Yeah, you can't, or transportation, right, or something like that.
A majority of things.
You know, that's operation.
I don't want to, sorry.
No, I was going to play devil's advocate respectfully.
Yeah.
Can't have a safe student in school without a roof.
This is true. Yeah.
Or maybe you can, I don't know, but it doesn't sound like a. Good safety mechanism.
Yeah.
I. To me, it goes back to, I, I don't recall if it was Mrs. On or Ms. Weinstein. What does student achievement mean? Like what is, what is the definition of that? As soon as someone said that, that's, that's kind of clicked with me like, right, yeah. I, I could come up with fifty different definitions right now and they probably all be correct in some form, so.
Split hairs. I'm also maybe reading this differently. So the board considers, so to me, it says the board considers and communicates how decisions are linked to student achievement. One, and the budgeting process two, not how we link student achievements to the budgeting process.
Yep.
So maybe, I don't know, maybe we could. I think that's why we're a little confused. We're like, we're going to make it even three. So that, because I don't know if I honestly, I honestly don't remember what I've read of this. But to me, I think I read it as two things. We're communicating how our decisions in, impact student achievement. And the budget, not connecting the two of them.
That would make it clear.
It does, makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
And just in a general category, you know, we've been talking in curriculum committee about like a dashboard and student.
Yeah.
And those are the numbers and the test scores. And I know that we've spoken about some things are very hard to measure when you get into the social emotional side. That's difficult, but we're trying, we're trying as best we can to try to get a dashboard up and measure student achievement. At least get some quantification of metric.
Yeah.
Yeah, metric, yeah.
Yeah, I think it was definitely semantics for me. I saw the word linked and I was trying to bridge. Yeah. How we work and make decisions or communicate those decisions to student achievement and budget, how they are linked together. Not to accept.
I mean, I, I do think in terms of the student achievement, I can, I, for the life of me, I can't remember the group that came and reported on the data. But we were asking, in fact, Mr. Brazil, it might have been you. Are there other analogues with similarly populated districts with similar funding? That we can compare our scores against, because it was, it was a more accurate comparison. And I think their response was kind of like, well, we did that to an extent, but not really. And they kind of danced around a little bit. But so I bring it up because I, I do think however we define achievement, to me, our achievement should be benchmarked against ourselves year over year. That's, that's the best analog, because I don't know that we're going to get an exact comparator to Warren. You know, even next door in some of the other districts or whatever it is, but it does go back to the crux of, well, how are we defining achievement? But I do think the way we, we benchmark is against ourselves year over year on whatever metric it is we agree on. And that's whether we've achieved comparing last school year to this and then moving forward. Thank.
To Mr. Brazil's question though, is this an action item for us for board goals? I'm not sure it is. Yeah, I don't think so.
Because I think, well, we, we've already been working on this in curriculum committee, so I think we're prospectively looking for goals next year, right? I think we'll have the dashboard this year, so I don't know if there's much.
So maybe, maybe that's the goal, right? Some sort of self-help dashboard. Not a goal, but more of like a operational thing that allows us to measure it over time. Or maybe more consistently versus a once-a-year look.
That, that would be multi-year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there is in the new, you know, the state database, there is a growth score. We've talked about this in curriculum, maybe like growth is important. I like that. They did growth, not comparing ourselves to others, but really set tough targets for ourselves at Warren. And that is a growth. And we, we've talked about how to measure that.
Yeah, I want Dr. Mingle, the chairman, but. I, I like that. I think that definition though just needs to be, just so everyone's on the same, this is my opinion. Maybe it's already been defined, but what is student achievement? How do we define that? It's kind of, that's the mental gap in my head. Please.
So the, we had a, the board had a goal about defining student achievement for two years. So we went through that process. The fact that we're not all totally on the same page, I think is something that we should pay attention to. Where we always struggled with in those conversations, because that happened through the curriculum committee. Was the, as several people have pointed out, was the part that's hard to quantify around S E L and everything else. The dashboard is the conclusion of that work. Which is essentially ready to go. We're just waiting on the state data from this past year to sort of have it ready. And that is to give a year over year, it has the whole childhood survey result, it has all the, the things we have that are quantifiable. As far as the question of whether it needs to be a board, I mean, that's your decision, obviously. As far as my read of the key takeaways here. There, they were all about that, as far where to, to work. They were all about those pieces you already spoke about with. And, and maybe it's new member training and not. The Roberts Rules Review, that might be a good solution, or at least a good this year focus. Everything else I put into the, you know, recommendations around board goals are the annual focus on the strategic plan. It is a negotiations year coming up with the W T A A, so that's always one of the goals there. And then it's separating the board goals from the district goals, which we'll talk about after executive session. And then it's separating the board goals from the district goals, which we'll talk about after executive session, which gets into a lot of the other topics around student achievement, safety and security, and so on.
Yeah, it's funny because hearing, hearing you say that, Dr. Mingle, and I'm not trying to have the board skate out of goals, but the more goals we make, the more stretched we are, right, and the thinner we become. So I think it's also prioritization exercise of like, what is paramount to this board that we want to achieve? And what's maybe honestly like secondary, right? That's not a goal, but it's still floating around in our heads that we try and achieve, but it's not a stated goal.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Mingle, for that as well.
Yeah.
Anything else for student achievement, performance monitoring? The next two are board operations and meetings and board operations and board member communications. I looked ahead a little bit, and we definitely looked at one. Board members do not surprise the administration or fellow board members in meetings. And then the next one is board members share information appropriately through the committee chairs and the board president between meetings and do not surprise each other in public. Again, the same kind of theme, it feels like, and I'm not trying to stop the conversation. I just don't want to unnecessarily drag it on either.
I think whatever cheat sheet you were talking about, I really do think that would be helpful. Like, if you're trying to do X, make a motion. These are the steps you should follow. If you'd like to bring up new business, here's the steps you should follow to get either, something like that. Those two, I think Mrs. On pointed out, that's it, right? Like, I remember when I first went, I'm like, I don't know how to do this stuff. And I was nervous.
Yeah, it can be intimidating.
Yeah, I think those like step by step things would be helpful.
Well said. Any other final thoughts on the self eval? Results, questions, Mrs. On?
Just on the last section, board staff relations, the low item there. Board members attend school and community activities. I think someone made a comment here. If they didn't, I would have. It would be nice to have a clear understanding of where board attendance, of board members' attendance is welcome. Because it's not a presumption I have that it always is. And because, you know, certainly there are, I could build more in, right? Maybe the rest as well, if if it were just really clear what it is that is happening, that where a board members' president enhance, or not board members', but a board members' presence enhances our profile, makes us look available, that kind of thing.
Add on to that one. Yes, I agree. If we could have as advanced notice as possible on that stuff. You do ask us, hey, you know, would you like to attend X, Y, and Z? And I'll be the first to admit I'm guilty of attending not much of it. But it just within the realm of of reasonability, if we could get as much advanced notice as possible, that would be great. Because I'd be happy to attend some of that stuff. I just got to block my calendar and do it. So, yeah, but I agree with you, right, like where we should be and shouldn't be in terms of board board presence would be good to know.
So that might be one of those, sorry, that might be one of those things that doesn't need to be a stated goal. It's a relatively easy thing. When there are big events, I can include them in the weekly update. And the the calendar of public publicly open events is on the district website for every school. So that is information that's available to all of you. But I can make sure, I think to Mrs. On's point, you know, this would be a great thing for there to be a board presence at coming up, you know, whether it's, you know, there's no way to do advanced notice, but sports championship games are an example. Those are not advanced notice, but a couple of days. When there's, you know, the middle school musical, those kinds of events that we know are coming, we can make sure that you have several weeks in advance and whoever can attend can attend. Yeah, that's not a big deal. We should, we should do that.
And for something like the musical, tickets have to be purchased. So not just, yeah, also the link to purchase the tickets. Because if you don't have a middle school kid, you don't get that.
And musicals are awesome. Some of the best I've seen, quite honestly. Go ahead, Dr. Mingle.
Before you move move off of the reflection, the the fifth lowest thing on there, because it's not going to come up with these other conversations around policies being available. Not all board members may be aware of this, but we do now make all of the draft policies available to the public on the website ahead of time. That came out of previous board request for that. So you would have no reason to know that because you get them, but they are now available ahead of the meetings on the on the website. And it hasn't been a perfect process getting to that point, but that'll be taken care of as well.
Thank you for that. I will say on that. The last couple pages, I think, were just summarized of these going to the, I'm trying to follow a couple of things. Okay. Key takeaways. It's on 2022, 23, planning. Move on to board, I'm sorry, board goal setting. Yeah, I did not print this big enough.
So I just made a couple of notes of things that I know will come up next year. So I recommended as far as board goals, a new five-year capital plan, the finance committee clearly has talked about that being a high priority. That is a board function we've now essentially completed or we're in progress of complete. So that seems like a pretty obvious one to me. Whenever there's a negotiation, we put that on as a goal. That's so that's there. Since the strategic plan was passed, we've had something around whatever that year's priorities are. We'll talk about that more later, but we've kept the wording pretty broad. And then if anything came out of the reflection, what I heard of, what I heard out of the reflection was either something around how do we bring topics to the board? Or and or something around how do we support new board members? And maybe supporting new board members gets at both.
Yeah.
And maybe that's all it is, you know, improve the way we support new board members. And then down the road, you all talk about whether that's a mentoring program, the training programs, whatever.
I think that's a good summary from what I recall. Any board member feedback on what Dr. Mingle had just shared for the recommendations? Seeing none? Be good to move into executive, the first executive, all right.
Okay. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, N J S A 10, four dash 11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and or matters of attorney client privilege, protection of public safety and property and or investigations of possible violations or violations of law and specific prospective or current employees unless all who could be adversely affected the superintendent's evaluation. Action may be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meetings anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? The board is now in executive session. We're going to meet in
the conference room.
May not come. Run office conference room.
Return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, objections, board is back in, I'm sorry, back in public session, open session. Next on the agenda this evening is, I believe, action or retreat agenda. Strategic plan, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. In my memo to the board with the retreat schedule, this is initial thoughts on year three strategic plan priority. So just briefly kind of summarize for the benefit of the public as well. We are heading this school year 2223 is your three of our five year strategic plan. Every year we from within that plan identify what are this year's priority areas. And that's what the board has been approving as district goals for the last several years. The recommendation recommended areas for this year kind of follow that same process. We started with the strategic plan. We have our voice and engagement working groups which include board members, teachers and staff, parents from all five schools. That group brainstormed around what the priority should be. We did a survey of the community. We had somewhere around 250 responses from the community plus from staff, which have led to the recommendations for where the focus should be this year. So we have recommended focus in a couple of places in student achievement. You heard a lot of a lot of discussion about this over the last few months, but the recommended focus area there is to prioritize social emotional learning as a foundational component of academic growth and success. That's been at the top of our pyramid in our strategic plan all along. But you heard talk at the last meeting about the SEL specialist. You've heard about survey results and so on. I'm going to skip along and come back to that last. As everybody is aware, the board approved a plan to rezone the elementary schools. So planning for the implementation of the new enrollment zones needs to be a priority this year so that we're ready to hit the ground in September 23. Under safety, I believe we've already talked about this at board meetings as well. We are partnering with the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office to do an audit of our safety and security procedures and identify opportunities for enhancement. And then in the area of capital planning, we will be working on the first year of the referendum projects that were just approved during last school year. That'll be three summers in a row of referendum work. We've had a lot of discussions here about our lunch programs. That's part of capital planning, implementing the 2223 plans while planning for the long term. And then finally, we talked about this earlier in the retreat for a board goal as well, but updating the long range capital plan. So we've kind of had these rolling five year plans. We're at the end of a five year plan, so updating that for the next five years is important. And then the one area that sounds new in the notes to the board is we're calling belonging, which I think responds to quite a few of the topics that we talked about over the last year. So what we mean by belonging is making sure that every student who walks into one of our schools not only feels like, but actually does experience a sense of I belong in this place at this time. And that goes in order to get there for each and every student, we have to make sure that each and every adult feels that way too. So a whole child approach to education requires a whole adult approach to education as well. And so you'll see here, we're recommending that we focus first on our staff capacity to make sure that our staff is trained to be able to do those things. That the culture that we create and support is about belonging and community. So when we have HIB bowling investigations, this plays into that. As the community changes over the next few years, as new developments become populated, as we go through moving some families from one elementary school to another, that we do that with a sense of how do we make sure everybody feels comfortable and that they belong where they are? And that all of that takes into account student voice. I think the changes the board approved at the last meeting, well, we'll finalize approving tonight to the dress code is a good example of bringing the students to the table so that they are helping to contribute to a sense of belonging. So that's what we mean by belonging there. I think it takes a lot of things we had been talking about and brings it together under one title that we can all sort of come to understand together. So that's, that's that. Basically what we need from the board at this point is if you think any of those items are going in the wrong direction, that feedback would be helpful tonight before we finalize it. What would happen next is by the, by the August board meeting, you would see action plans and how we propose to evaluate our success on these things so that we could talk about that in August.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Any board members have any thoughts, feedback, direction, redirection, questions? Regarding what Dr. Mingle has shared. Dr. Mingle, I will take the lack of feedback as a green light. Thank you. How good from that perspective. Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to the minutes of the last meeting, Ms. Keller.
Yeah, resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the June 20th, 2022 board meeting.
Second.
Right, so this is a roll call in the minutes. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mr. Dusay?
Yes.
This is DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Motion passes eight zero. Thank you. Correspondence and information, turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Nothing to report.
Fantastic. President's remarks. Welcome, everyone. Great to see everyone. Hope everyone's having a wonderful summer so far. I certainly appreciate the board arriving here around four o'clock today. So this is our annual retreat. Quite frankly, it's been a fantastic discussion and I really mean that. So thank you, everyone, for your time. This is, this is what makes, this is part of what makes our board highly functioning, I think was referenced earlier. I certainly agree with that. And obviously, we're all here for the benefits of our students and our staff as well as the public. So thank you, everyone, for the very engaging discussion on that mark. I also wanted to see one and see two on the agenda. Also wanted to welcome our new staff and substitutes. Certainly look forward to having them join us at the end of August, if not sooner. I'm sure they will be fully emerged in the new staff experience that all of our staff enjoys. And just a final, I think, final reminder from me, July 25th at 4:00 PM. If there's anyone interested in running for the Board of Ed petitions, I believe need to be submitted to the county clerk by that time. So just a friendly reminder with regards to that. And that's all I have for this evening. I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. Echoing two of your items there, my sincere appreciation as well for the board retreat topics. It's on the recording for anybody who wants to go back and watch that part of the meeting, but the board had a lengthy discussion about its goals and its self-reflection on its operations from a governance standpoint, which I agree is something that I think sets this board apart from many others. July 25th is the right deadline as far as the board seats are concerned. And then just two things I wanted to mention that are not on the agenda. Summer Fund is in full swing. There we are, I mean, it's, we're bursting at the seams. That's how successful it is. So we know we've had some growing pains with things like pickup and all that sort of thing with the number of kids involved, but Summer Fund is the largest elementary school we run. And what I mean by that is there are more kids in Summer Fund at Mount Horr than any of our elementary schools during the regular school year. And I just want to remind everyone that that program is run by two of our teaching staff members who work under their admin certificates during the summer. Mrs. Latiri, Mr. Sell, as well as Mrs. Smolinski, our supervisor of special ed on the extended school year side of things. You know, I have, I was there this morning. There's so many really engaging, fun things that happen at Summer Fund in addition to the academic support and extended school year experience. So very excited we have another two weeks and, you know, this week and next week left in Summer Fund. And then I also want to provide a quick update to the board on the social emotional learning specialist position that you approved last meeting. We were ecstatic to receive 25 applications to that position. And, and many other outreach from other superintendents and school districts. Many parents in the community who either were reaching out as parents or because they work in other places and wanted more information to bring back to their own employers. So very positively received in our region. Within that group of 25, we had more than one internal applicant. We had sitting administrators from other school districts, people working in all kinds of job descriptions. So we were ecstatic with the application process. We've narrowed it down to three finalists who are being interviewed this week. I expect to have the recommendation on the next agenda for you, but we're very happy with the progress we've made in just a few weeks. I think that's it as far as my update.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentations, there are none on the agenda. Similar for discussions, seeing none. We will move on to committee reports. First on the agenda is the Curriculum Communications and Technology Committee.
Yep, we met on June 20th. The topics for that meeting were to go over the spring I-ready results. We got an update on the summer curriculum writing. Specifically, we reviewed some of the K through five lesson resources. And then the full committee was given the opportunity to review those materials. And I want to thank Mr. Kimick for giving us that opportunity. And I want to thank the committee members for engaging with that and giving their feedback. And we are going to be continuing this work. I think we meet again on Wednesday.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Moving on to Finance Operations and Security Committee. I don't believe there Thank you, Ms. Keller. Moving on to finance operations and security committee. I don't believe there was one that which brings us to the personnel and negotiations committee, Mr. Weinstein.
Yep, thank you. So as Dr. Mingle mentioned, as part of agenda item C5, there's two job descriptions. One is assistant superintendent. So this is in essence, specific duties, but not limited to district wide coordination, curriculum, technology integration and staff development. The other one is the, the social and emotional specialist. This is something that requires this person to kind of span the entire school district, all the elementary schools as well as the middle school. They're going to provide support and training to staff members on how to best meet the, the social emotional needs of students. They'll serve as liaison between the district families and community resources, and then provide counseling to students in high needs crisis situations. And we also kind of had, I would say mild preparation discussion for the administration's association negotiation kickoff. That'll be in October for the following school year in terms of salary negotiations. And then lastly, the board collaborated to put together Dr. Mingle's annual review. We delivered that to him last month. So I wanted to thank the board for the contributions. I know each of us contributed to that review. Also wanted to thank Dr. Mingle for navigating the district through this past year, which was not without its challenges. And that meeting took place on June 28th. I don't know when the next meeting is scheduled for. But there will be one this summer. There we go. Very good.
Coming soon. Thank you, Mr. Weinstein.
Sure.
That brings us to our first public commentary for the evening. This is for any items that are on the agenda for this evening. Members of the public will have the opportunity to provide feedback, comments to the board. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliation, if appropriate, you will have three minutes to address the board. If you could kindly address any comments to myself, that would be appreciated. We will start with in the room first. Are there any members of public in the room that wish to provide any comments on any agenda items? Seeing none, we will go to the Zoom participants. If there are any participants on Zoom who wish to participate in the first of two public comments for agenda items, if you could kindly use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, we will call on you and you will have three minutes to provide your comments. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the first public commentary?
Motion second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the first public commentary is now closed. Dr. Mingle, are there any items you wish to provide additional information on for items for board consideration and action?
I do have several. I'll try to go kind of chronologically on the agenda. So related to items, A3, C5, C6, seven and eight, all of that, just so it's clear for the members of the public, because it might seem a little bit confusing, is all of that is to document a recommendation I made to the board that changes the title of Mr. Kimick's position from curriculum director to assistant superintendent and transfers him from one to the other. This comes as a change to reflect what is essentially the de facto operation of the board, where Mr. Kimick is my right hand as far as operating the district. And this reflects the many years of experience and dedication to the district appropriately, I believe, as far as his title is concerned. So that's what that, all those different motions are to do that. So congratulations, Mr. Kimick, on that adjustment on tonight's agenda. B6, I want to thank Mr. Hagel, Mr. Pate and, and the team that they worked with, including representatives from the elementary school PTOs. There is a recommendation on the agenda tonight to adopt, to approve the food service provider for the elementary school program. We were very happy to have two bids this year, which made it a nice competitive process that included site visits, taste testing, et cetera, et cetera. So more to come on that, but thank you for the amount of work and thank you to the volunteers from the PTOs who helped make that happen as well. B7 and B8. I'm sure people have been seeing in the news about transportation costs in school districts. Thank you to Mr. Hagel, Ms. Hall, who's our transportation coordinator and to the dealman bus services, our local vendor. You can see the B7 and eight make it some adjustments to those routes at a level that is far superior to what other people with other bus vendors have experienced. So it's certainly a vendor and community relationship that we value. C1, I echo Mr. Breezy's comments to our new staff, but for the board's benefit, at the August 29th meeting, that's when we would plan to introduce all the new staff to you like we do every year. We invite them to a board meeting. There's a little bit of informal meet and greet time. That'll be the very first day that they're here under contract. And that night we have a board meeting, so we'll introduce them right then. And it's really, it's a nice way for you to get to know a little bit about the background of our new staff. To echo Mr. Weinstein and to what I said to the board privately, I appreciate, this is for C20, I appreciate the time and energy you put into the superintendent evaluation every year. I do think these kinds of processes are one of the things that, that set us apart here. So thank you for that, that effort and for your feedback. And D1, I mentioned this already, but it bears repeating for second and final approval on the agenda tonight is the updated dress code policy, which reflects what was a student led initiative to come to the board, work by an ad hoc committee and will be final after tonight's approval. With that, I turn it back.
Are any board members who wish to pull or have questions on any item for board consideration in action on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Keller?
Motion to approve items for board consideration, A1 through A4, B1 through B15, C1 through C20 and D1.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowson?
Yes.
Mr. De Say?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Motion's pass eight zero. Thank you. And now that it's passed, congratulations, Mr. Kimick. Unfinished business. I don't believe there are any seeing none, new business, similarly no items. Moving on to public commentary, this is the second and final public commentary planned for this evening's board meeting. If there are any members of the public who wish to provide comments on any topic, you will have three minutes to do so. If you could kindly state your name, address, group, group affiliation, if appropriate, and direct all comments to myself, the board would be very open to hearing your comments and feedback. Would any members of the public in the room that wish to participate? Yes? Oh, okay. Seeing none. Any members on Zoom, if you could kindly use the raise your hand feature? Is there a motion to close public commentary?
Motion. Jinx.
I think it's second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the second public commentary is now closed. And just before we adjourn, again, a final thank you to the board for tonight's conversations and dialogue. It is extremely refreshing to have this and, and I'll say to work with you all. So thank you again. And thank you to administration for working with us throughout this. So motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. This evening's meeting is over. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.